To get this meeting started, I want to call the workshop together. And sorry for the delay, but we're in. So I'm just, in terms of roll call, I just want to recognize that Councilmember Lopez is not with us and Councilmember Rue is on Zoom. So the next item is the council workshop, and this is regarding the local road safety plan. I know we had a citizen comment. If you want to read that citizen comment, go ahead Andrea.
So this comment was from Karen Collins, and she said, "Can you discuss and consider moving forward with elongating the seconds between the change in red lights to opposite traffic's green lights, specifically at the corner of Montevista and Orchard? I live at that corner, and the accident 2.5 weeks ago wrapped a car around the street pole along with a young girl losing her life this past summer at 7:00 a.m. on a Saturday morning. Not sure about other street corners, but the amount of people running red lights and the next side just gunning the gas without looking at cross-traffic is phenomenal."
Thank you. And if we can just let her know that we received her comments, and I believe the study, we're doing the Montevista Avenue study, we'll be looking at all that, Ed? Yeah, so if you can let her know too, that that's ongoing. All right, so let's have the workshop now, and who wants to lead off?
I think that's me.
Okay, go for it.
All right, so as the presentation comes up, I'll just introduce myself. Thank you so much for having me here. My name is Emily Finkel. I am a transportation planner with Fair and Peers. We are a transportation consulting firm, and we've been supporting Monica and her team on the development of the local roadway safety plan, and I'll talk about some other prior work that we've done on this topic as well. Thank you so much. Let's see if I can get this to work. Pressing hard. Yes. I think we just need to get them out.
There you go.
Perfect, thank you. All right, so first I'll start with a project overview. So the goal here really is very simple. We're talking about improving safety outcomes for people traveling on Montclair's roadways. This project builds on work that we did back in 2019 and 2020 as part of the systemic safety analysis report. We came to the council a few times then while we were working through that plan. And then the other project goals are really to identify additional priority projects beyond what was identified in that original plan. We'll incorporate the safe system approach and non-engineering strategies into the safety toolbox that were developed originally for that systemic safety analysis report effort, and I'll go into detail about what those two items mean in a bit. The next item is really, really critical. Caltrans now has a requirement that for highway safety improvement program funding, so that's money that the city gets from the state in order to implement safety projects, a local roadway safety plan has to be on the books. So that's a really critical piece of why we're here. And then I mentioned a few prior safety planning efforts. There's lots more that I'll talk about as well. So the final point that I just wanted to mention here in terms of project goals is really to bring all of that prior work together. So the recent safety planning work that's been done, I mentioned the systemic safety analysis report. There was also a safe routes to school plan focused specifically on safety around school locations. There was an active transportation plan that was more broadly focused on walking and biking in the city, but definitely had safety elements. In 2021, there was a complete street safety assessment completed, which was a pro bono project done by UC Berkeley, their SafeTrack program there to look at a few select sites in the city. And then other work that's been done, the city has been awarded recent highway safety improvement program funding, that grant funding that I just mentioned for the roundabout project Ramona and Howard. And then there's also been a lot of work that's been going on on the streets, so recent installations of projects. And a lot of that is focused around improving around schools, so around Vernon Middle School, Montevista Elementary School, and Montero Elementary School. You can see the list of items that have gone in in recent years. So I mentioned the safe system approach. The reason that this is an important component for us to be considering as part of this plan is that it's really representative of where the state of the practice is for roadway safety right now. So the focus has really shifted to be more on where are fatal and severe injury collisions occurring throughout the city? What are the factors that are contributing to those collisions? And how can we proactively work to eliminate those factors or mitigate those factors so that those collisions don't happen in the future? The other key components of this approach are really thinking about all players in the roadway system. So you can see the five elements in the middle of the circle there, safe road users, vehicles, post-crash care, speeds, and roads, really working together to make sure that we're focusing on safety. And the other key component here that's a little bit different than how roadway safety has been approached in the past is sort of recognition of we're human, there will be human errors, but how do we make sure that those human errors do not result in fatalities? So thinking about what are the duplicative systems, the different measures that we can put in place to make sure that if a mistake is made, someone is not severely injured or killed. The last thing I'll mention about the safe system approach is that it has been recently adopted by Caltrans and by USDOT as the overarching approach to roadway safety, and that's critical for the city in thinking about, again, future grant funding and sort of aligning with where those other agencies are on this topic. Okay, so I'll get into what are the key components of the plan. The first was developing a vision and a set of priorities. So the vision statement here is to eliminate fatalities and serious injuries by 2050 through the proactive implementation of safety improvements for all people who travel on Montclair's streets. I'll just mention there that that 2050 date, this goes back to the alignment with Caltrans and sort of being in line with what Caltrans is looking to see in terms of how they're doling out funding, if jurisdictions are sort of committed to where that agency is headed. So that's where that date comes from. And that date and that concept is part of a broader roadway safety approach that I talked about with safe system, which is really, again, focused on elimination of fatalities and serious injuries specifically. The other safe system piece here that's important to note is that the priorities are matching the priorities of those five safe system elements that I showed on the last slide. So we're really in alignment with where state and federal policy is on roadway safety. The next component of the plan is safety partners. So Montclair Police Department, I mentioned, we've been working on several different projects over the past several years. They've been a great partner on those. There's a few other safety partners that have been in the mix on different components of work thus far, but can be really great partners moving forward in future safety work as well, and that's why they're identified here. So that's the school district and schools, Caltrans, SBCTA, OmniTrans, different community groups, and then also city partners. So beyond Monica and her team, who are the other folks within the city that are really helping to make sure that roadway safety is a priority? The next component of the plan was focused on implementation strategies. So there's a few different key pieces here that the city can consider. So the first is to reprioritize or modify projects that are already identified to consider what are safety enhancements that can occur as those projects get implemented. Similar, the second bullet is incorporating safety into existing programs. So for example, repaving programs or maintenance programs, are there sort of low-hanging fruit items that can be incorporated when crews go out to do that maintenance? So thinking about that. The third item is incorporating the goals that are set out in this plan into all roadway projects. So that really speaks to the first two, but any projects beyond what's been currently planned are those maintenance projects. And then there's also an opportunity for implementing interim projects, so pilot projects to see if there's something you want to try out, see if it works well or not. The second-to-last bullet here is really incorporating safety goals into citywide traffic impact analysis. So when new development is coming into the city, is there an eye towards a roadway safety lens and how that can be aligned with the investment in that development? And then the last point here is bundling similar project types so that they're more easily implemented. So for example, there was, from the public comment, a question about signal timing projects. Are there a group of signal timing projects that could be bundled together that would have a broad safety impact? So those are just some of the implementation strategies. This is something that's a little further on in the plan, but I thought was really important and just wanted to make sure that we spent some time on that. See, I lost the clicker again. Okay, additional plan components. There are several that I'll just mention briefly here, and then the last three will go into additional detail. So you'll see in the plan that there was a summary done of all of those existing efforts that I talked about, what the city has done to date, and how those correspond to the different safe system elements that I mentioned. There's also a comparison of those different safety planning documents, how they fit together, what's unique about each one of them, to help compare across those different deliverables. There's also a prioritized project list that brings together the projects that were identified in each one of those plans into a comprehensive list, and this is also in an Excel spreadsheet format too, that Monica and her team can easily sort by number of collisions, number of severe collisions, and that's really to help identify, okay, what's next on the list that's going to be highest impact in terms of implementation? Or what's next on the list that's going to be most competitive for the next round of grant funding that we have coming up? And speaking of grant funding, the fourth bullet there is there's also updated information on funding sources when the next round is, so the city can get prepared for that. And also, there's a few new sources, especially on the federal side, so there's information about that as well. The last three components here, safety data trends, the non-engineering countermeasure toolbox, and the three new recommended projects, I'll go into greater detail. Okay, starting with safety trends. So for this plan, we looked at collisions in the city that occurred between 2015 and There were 1,114 collisions that resulted in an injury between those years, and 48 of those collisions resulted in a fatality or a severe injury. So I mentioned those are really the ones that we want to place a lot of focus on, and you'll hear me and other roadway safety folks refer to those collisions as KSI or Killed and Severely Injured. So just an acronym to watch out. I try to get rid of all my acronyms when I walk in the room, but sometimes I slip back. So the key point on this slide is that more than 40% of those collisions where someone was killed or severely injured involves someone walking or riding a bike, and that's compared with those modes, those two modes together only accounted for 13% when we look at those injury collisions overall. So there's a disproportionality happening there with people who are walking and people who are riding bikes. When they are getting hit, those collisions are being more, they're more severe, and often that severity stems from the speed at which a vehicle is traveling, and that gets back to that safe speeds being a really important component of the safe system approach. There's a few trends that we uncovered in terms of driver behavior. So on the violation side of things, we saw the top three violations where a driver was violating another driver's right-of-way. The second was disobeying traffic signals or stop signs, and the third was driving at an unsafe speed. And I'll just mention here that this is the, what the violation was recorded at as in the collision record, that doesn't necessarily mean that in those top two violation categories, speed was also not an issue. Like, it was definitely an issue if especially someone was killed or severely injured. You can assume speed is going to be an issue sort of across the board, so I just wanted to mention that. The top three collision types that we saw were broadside, rear end, and then head-on. And then the driver movements, so of the driver, the collisions that involved a driver, so we saw them proceeding straight in about 2/3 of the collisions, and then about 27% of the collisions, the driver was making a left turn. So that's another place we ended up focusing our efforts, and then making a right turn in about 7% of those collisions. Pedestrian collision trends, so this is another one where we're comparing what we saw in the injury collisions overall versus what we saw in those most severe collisions. And the, what we saw overall was that pedestrians were hit most often while they were crossing in a crosswalk, but when those collisions were resulting in a severe injury or fatality, more often the pedestrian was not crossing, they were in the road, something else was going on. So that's just something to keep in mind in terms of differences we see when we're talking about severe collisions. So then we also looked at what are the different roadway variables that are a factor in collision? So here's just one stat we pulled out. Streets that have four or more lanes account for just about 20% of the roadway network in the city of Montclair, but that's where 72% of these injury collisions occur. So you can see, again, we're able to narrow our focus and look at some really specific factors and specific locations based on that information. Similar trends for posted speed, so where posted speed is 40 miles an hour or greater, that's about 11% of the roadway network, but that's where 68% of our injury collisions occur. And I have just a few stats from the Institute of Transportation Engineers here about what the survivability is, especially for a pedestrian of those collisions at different speeds. So you can see at 40 miles an hour, 20% chance of survival. When that drops just 10 miles per hour to 30, the chance of survival goes up to 60%. So small changes making a big difference when we think about, about speed there. Location was another interesting one, so over half of injury collisions occur at signals. But when we look specifically at fatal and severe, then we focus on unsignalized intersections. That's where the largest share is happening of those three categories. Then we dive even deeper. So this is just one example about how we sort of uncover the layers of the data. So we saw, okay, so 44% of fatal and severe injury collisions are occurring at unsignalized intersections. What are those intersections like? So we looked at, are those intersections where a local residential road is meeting a local residential road? Or are they bigger intersections where a local residential road is maybe crossing an arterial that has multiple lanes, but there's not a signal? So it has a side-street stop control. And that really accounts for a large share. You can see 72% of those unsignalized intersection collisions are happening at those larger types of intersections. So that's just another example of how we dive in a little bit deeper. Time of day, so most injury collisions occur in the afternoon or early evening, but when we look at severe and fatal collisions, those are more likely to occur during the AM peak period or overnight. And I'll say that the AM peak period piece is pretty unique to Montclair. I have not really seen that in other jurisdictions that I've worked in, so just a note there. And then the where of this, so where specifically are these collisions happening? We also looked at that, and we sorted all segments and all intersections within the city based on the total number of collisions that were seen and the total number of severe and fatal that were seen. And here's just a snapshot of the top 10 intersections, and the ones in green are the ones that were not previously studied as part of the prior systemic safety analysis report. So that sort of helped us narrow down in terms of where specifically we wanted to find new priority projects. So that leads to safety project development. As part of this work, we chose three new projects to add to the list of projects that had been developed through those prior efforts. Those three projects are San Bernardino Street, from Ramona to Benson, Central, from Orchard to Holt, and Ramona, from Kingsley to State. So I'll just mention a few stats. Each one of these had between 60 and 85 total injury collisions within those segments of the corridors. And there were a few different things that we saw. So on San Bernardino Street, really an opportunity where there's lower vehicle volumes compared to some of the other streets in the city, but you have a high posted speed. So is there an opportunity to reconfigure the lanes on that street? Maybe something similar to Orchard, and an opportunity to bring those speeds down to address the collisions that were seen along San Bernardino. On Central, there's a lot of really good work that's been done recently to upgrade signals and things like that, but there's more opportunity for potentially a buffered bike lane, especially as an interim solution, as Central is looked at in the larger general plan context moving forward, and some opportunities for new protected left turns, striping upgrades, things like that. And then on Ramona, we saw the top violation of unsafe speed with the potential for proposed mini roundabouts at Bandera and at Kingsley, and then some upgrades that were proposed to the signal at Holt. And then this last piece I just want to mention, because you may have heard this term previously, daylighting, which is basically just using red paint at the curb to make sure that parking is not going all the way to the intersection. So this is something that's happened, happening throughout the city. There's a lot of locations that have this already, but some locations that don't. And cities that have invested a lot in this pretty low-cost item have seen really great dividends in terms of safety improvement, so I just wanted to point that one out. So this is an example, and I'm not going to go through all the projects in detail, but in the report you'll see, this is one example of how those proposed projects are laid out. So here's the Ramona example, and we talk about at the different intersections, what are the different countermeasures or safety strategies, we call them, that could be used to help with specific issues that we're seeing there or specific collision trends that we were seeing. So I mentioned this already, but I think it's really important that beyond these three projects we identified, there's also a whole host of other projects from prior work that we've prioritized based on how it would score in terms of number of severe injuries and fatalities for grant applications. And that really is what factors into the benefit cost ratio that's used for those applications. And you can see a lot of them are around schools. Some of them are around the schools that we already talked about. The city has implemented new work at, so Montero and Montevista, but a few other projects that could be considered sort of as the up-next priority projects for the city. So on the safety countermeasure toolbox, I'll just mention that we previously focused on engineering strategies, and in this work, we focused on non-engineering strategies. So three of those I just wanted to point out quickly. One is the high-visibility enforcement for DUIs. You'll see that there's a five-star rating there, and that comes from the National Highway Traffic Safety Administration. They rate how well these different strategies work. That one works extremely well. Your police department is already doing it. They're getting funding from the Office of Traffic Safety at the state to do that work. So that's one that is great and should, the city should keep doing. Speed limit modification, that's another one that has a very high rating, and there is some additional flexibility from the state to allow for posted speeds to maybe be reduced a little bit in certain contexts. So that's something that could be considered. And then the third one I just wanted to mention is the safe speeds education campaign. There's resources from SCAG, there's resources from the Office of Traffic Safety, the state, that the city can use, free resources, and repurpose for specific education campaigns locally. So that's another resource to consider. So next steps, one of the key next steps is thinking about grant funding in the future to get these projects on the ground. So I've highlighted three of the key funding programs to be considering. The first is Streets and Roads for All. That's the federal new program that the first round of awards just got announced last week, and this will be an annual program for the next five years that's available to the city. Highway Safety Improvement Program, that's a Caltrans program. The next round of that will be next year. And then Caltrans Active Transportation Program, another one that will be available end of 2023 or beginning of 2024. So that concludes our presentation here, and I'm happy to take any questions.
Well, great. I'll start with Mayor Portman Johnson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you, Ms. Finkel, for this report. It sounds to me that, based on what I've heard, that most of our fatalities happen on wide streets that allow for faster traffic. So my question is, are we, as some part of our plan, going to be to narrow some of the streets? And the example that comes to my mind is Ramona and Howard, where I think we're narrowing the street as we build the roundabout.
Yes.
But is that a plan, is that, is citywide, is that part of this plan?
So there's nothing specific that recommends citywide, the narrowing of streets or the narrowing of lanes in this plan, but it is a component of the, some of the projects that I mentioned. And in the prior plan, the systemic safety analysis report, which is still great and should still be used, that one was really focused on street design, and that is a key component. I mentioned the engineering countermeasure toolbox. Roadway width is a key component that the city can be using to help with some of those issues, yes.
Excellent, thank you.
Councilmember Rue, do you have anything? Just unmute yourself. If not, just, you don't have to unmute yourself. Yes? Just, there you are. Go ahead, go ahead, Bill. No? Okay, yeah, how about, go ahead to Councilmember Martinez.
No questions. I just wanted to thank you. This has to be one of the most important issues for our residents. It's what I hear constantly, and this will help me to help them and to discuss these issues with them when they are raised, and I'm probably going to laminate this and put it up on a bookshelf to have for reference, so thank you very much.
Yeah, thank you. I'm happy to hear that, and happy to hear that we're addressing what you're hearing as well.
Thank you.
Okay. Yeah, obviously, this is a big issue that we all hear about is traffic, and recently we've had some serious traffic collisions in Montclair, which I know I can't talk about here. Right, Diane? Nevertheless, I read today's paper, and there was an article, and... Nevertheless, I, this, I read today's paper, and there was an article, and the article talked about how since the pandemic, we have seen a great deal of, not just our region, but throughout the nation, of, of more collisions, more bad behavior drivers. And it has continued on since the pandemic. I know the federal government is throwing some grants to try to address this issue as well, which is going to be very little. And so I observed, to me, is there's a lot more bad driver behavior out there, especially these last three years. People are speeding, they don't care about, they don't care about speed limits, people are purposely going past stop signs, they're, they're running red lights. And of course, you have the distraction of the cell phones, and then, of course, you have DUI. And it just makes it much more challenging for us to, to attempt to, to deal with this issue, to make sure that our, our streets are safe, making sure our pedestrians are safe. In our city, as you know, we're a, we're a much older community. You know, a lot of our roads were built back in the 50s and the 60s and 70s at a time when the population was smaller, obviously less traffic. And today, we have a bigger population, not just in Montclair, but our region, and of course, there's a lot more cars in the road. And the kind of roads won't, weren't built for it, or need to be modified for it. Of course, you have to modify it for it, you need money. So I appreciate the report, and I know that the city is going to put up quite a few of the blinking stop signs this, this calendar year. And that's going to help improve a lot. And I know that we're getting ready to do Montevista Avenue, for example, which will address some of these issues, the safety issues. We just did Central Avenue, and we're going to do Mills Avenue, another one. And you mentioned Montevista and State Street. I just had a question. Is this the, Montevista State Street, is this before the bridge went in? It's on page, hotspots. Number two, Montevista and State Street. Montevista is a north-south street, and State Street, east and west street. My question is that, is that going to be, is that the bridge? Is that pre-bridge, or that's now?
That is not, is not now. So this is only through 2019.
Okay. Before the bridge, bridge opened, okay. So that, that was, I thought that was the case. Can you explain what a daylighting is? A daylight, what is that?
Yeah, so that, that's the, the countermeasure, the strategy where you, you really just add red curb to specifically unsignalized intersections, stop-controlled intersections is where we see it. So that parked cars are farther back from the intersection, and there's a better sightline for other cars, for pedestrians crossing the street or something like that.
I would agree with that.
Yep.
I would agree that there are probably some intersections I could use that for improvement, and that's a cheap, cheap method.
Yep.
To go about. And I know that you added three intersections, three locations in here, but can find them again, excuse me. I know one was Samuel Street between Ramona and Benson, which is obvious, it is four lanes each, two lanes each way, right?
Yeah.
Already. Of course, that was paved about five years ago. Central Avenue between Orchard and Holt. And then you talked about Ramona Avenue between Kingsley to State Street. And I just wanted to ask the staff, I think we really need to address the Bandera, Bandera, Ramona area. It's pretty bad. You may want to do that red line right now because there are cars trying to come out of Bandera, or trying to come out of those alleys, or Canoga, and they're squeaking out there. And I, I really think we need to address that sooner than later. I've been out there, I've seen it, and I'm just, I think, I think that's, that's a hotspot right now to be addressed. So going, asking the question to staff now, and I, and I wish all this stuff was cheap, and we can just do it and get it over with, but it doesn't work that way. So Ed, other than, or Monica, other than what I just mentioned, is there anything else in the short term that city staff is looking at? Or a lot of this stuff is going to depend upon getting grants and?
Well, it's a mix of both. We are going after a lot of grants. In fact, we are going after so many grants that our staff is overburdened by the number of projects that we are developing through the grant process. But a lot of these fixes will also be part of the 2022 lease revenue bonds.
Right.
Or 2021 lease revenue bonds. We are still in the process of spending that money. We have probably still $42 million left of that to spend, so there's a lot of projects still coming in front of us. With the combination of the two, I hope and expect that you'll see that through the implementation of the recommendations you're hearing tonight, as well as what is in the Safe routes to school and the earlier systemic safety analysis plan, that we will be addressing a lot of these issues that are discussed tonight.
So we are going to Central Avenue, north of freeway, has been done. So just to be incorporated that. Arrow Highway between Centro and Montevista. We're doing Montevista.
Actually, we're extending it all the way to the Mills Avenue now.
We're doing, we're doing Montevista Avenue from State, well.
From Holt Boulevard to the 10 freeway, and then we'll do north of the 10 freeway once the 10 freeway project is completed.
We're doing Mills Avenue, which already has a bike lane, we're doing Mills. Where are, I believe we have Benson Avenue is in the plan too, if I'm correct. Benson Avenue?
Well, there's a, a recommendation to do a roundabout, I believe, that was discussed this evening at Ramona and Kingsley. And then there is a mini roundabout also recommended at Ramona and Bandera.
Yeah, but those are not ongoing, that's, those are new, but I'm talking about ongoing projects, so we've already, we've already gave you the green light on, in the, in the bond allocation.
Yes, other than that, no, there are not improvements, other than the red light, flashing red light, or stop signs.
Benito's already done, so, and Sam Dino obviously is also done too.
Yes.
Okay, well, I, I realize this stuff, it does take time. You got to target it. Try to target the more serious areas, we're, we're doing that. And I, I think the blinking, the blinking stop signs are going to help a lot. I mean, I was, I was on Ramona the other day, and my wife pointed out, we were at Mission, and you can see the blinking light at Howard from, from a great deal of a distance. That should get your attention unless you're DUI, you're distracted with a cellphone, or you just don't care. So, all right, I think Councilmember Rue has something to say. Councilmember Rue, you there? Your hands up, you want to speak?
Hello?
Yeah, go ahead, we can hear you.
Yes, I do have my hand up, Mr. Mayor. Just a couple of questions. One, in looking at this for funding, have we explored the Safe Routes to School program? It may have been in here, and I didn't hear it, it's very difficult to hear on this. I think it's worthwhile where we have these issues in school zones. Number two, one of the things I've noticed, and I put about 30,000 to 35,000 miles a year in my car for work, is when you narrow a street in one area, the people may slow down, but they tend to speed up in the next area. Or yeah.
You there, Bill? Is that a question, question mark?
Oh, I think we need to look at this, rather than narrow. The other thing is, and I know we consider it, again, I'm going to ask the question demand-wise.
So your question is?
I, I, I'm sorry, it, I'll have to put my hand, it's very difficult to hear on this. Hello?
Yeah, I can hear you. So your question is, again?
It's very difficult to hear, Mr. Mayor.
Your question is about narrow, narrow in the street? Okay, I guess, we'll have Councilmember Rue, if he can, maybe.
It's just, it, it's just difficult to hear on this.
Yeah, if he can, Bill, just submit your questions in email, and we'll get the, we'll give you, provide some answers, or we'll provide those comments to the consultant.
Good evening.
Oh, go ahead. Go ahead, Monica.
I just wanted to add, wanted to add that actually in the last round of.
Programs we can use is the Safe Roots, excuse me, Safe Routes to School program.
Yeah, go ahead, Monica.
Yeah, so what I wanted to add is that at, at the, the last grant applications that we submitted for active transportation projects, I actually used the combination of all of these plans to come up with, with projects along the different schools that were mentioned here. And I think we're just waiting to hear back. Hopefully in May, we'll know whether we get that.
Okay.
That grant or not. But these plans are very useful, and using them in combination, it's really neat. So I just wanted to add that. Thanks.
And I think at, if I'm correct, SBC TA, in my last, I don't know what meeting it was, in the meeting in January, I thought, I can't remember, with SCAG funds, but I thought Montclair was recommended for Ward II.
Yes, that is correct. There was a recommendation to forward on to SCAG.
Thank you.
For funding for Montclair's request for funding, but that's not been approved yet.
Hasn't proved yet, but that was Safe to Route to Schools program money, if I'm correct. So.
Or cycle six, and SBC does not expect to receive much funding in cycle six.
All right. Okay, anything else? If not, then I'll appreciate your time being here. And actually, before we go on, I got to remember public comment. I'm pretty sure there's at least one person that wants to do public comment. So do we have members of the public who want to speak? No?
Just Bruce Cole on Zoom.
Bruce wants to speak? Okay. Got five minutes. Go here, Bruce.
All right, can you hear me?
Yep.
Okay. Thank you for that presentation. I'm really glad that we're, the city's taking an active approach to the, the safety of the residents. This is a well-thought-out plan. Hopefully, we can implement this quickly and effectively. And it looks like we've identified a lot of great opportunities in the city to make residents safe, especially pedestrians, cyclists, things like that. It's interesting that where I live, I'm surrounded by four-lane highways of speeds over 40 miles an hour on three sides of Paseo, so basically, any resident crossing the street probably has a 20% chance or less to survive an accident. So hopefully, as we build and build more high-density housing and add more, you know, we've already got well over 1,000 new residents up in this area, you're going to add about another 10,000 people into this area. And the goal is to make it a walkable community, that we reduce the number of lanes, or, most importantly, going from these 40 and 45 mile an hour speed limits down to 30. The northern portion of Montclair is a very small, as mentioned many times in these city council meetings, we have a very small city. Going from east to west, there's probably less than a mile or two. So you can get through the, from the east side of the city to the west side of the city at 30 miles an hour very, very quickly. There's really no reason that we should have any speed limit, probably in the entire city, going over this, if the priority is to reduce people being killed or seriously injured in an accident. If that's the, if that's the priority of the city council and the city, I think we should, and with the state giving more ability for cities to set their own speed limits without as much traffic stays and things like that, there should be no reason that we have any street in the city of Montclair with a speed limit above 35 miles an hour. If it's truly the wish of the, and the mission statement and the vision statement of our city, to eliminate speed, people being killed or seriously injured in the, on the street. So I just ask that, as we move forward, we look, especially where I live up in the north part, to get those speeds reduced so that we can eliminate these deaths. Thank you.
Great, thank you. With that, we're, we're done. Thanks.
Thank you.